Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School Board Director's Meeting for Wednesday, August 20th. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance by the Bookmobile students. You have the students.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the presentation of the Powell Summer Bookmobile.
Pam Cuccini and Caitlin Hunt.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just gonna get this started. So, we went around to reservice all the kids in Powell and we go from house to house to house to house. We have tubs of books that we put in the back of Mrs. Hunt's truck and we just, we drive around, they go through in the back of the book as a card catalog, like the old library systems that you used to use, and they check out one to two books, some of the kids check out more, and then next week we come back and we do it all over again. We like to give a little incentive for them for reading, just keep them going at it, so every week they get a little incentive for each time they do it. We took some pictures of some of the kids that we serviced and we literally go all over Powell. This year, we actually went to the top of Skipper Reroke, which was quite a hot spot, really beautiful. So, it was a lot of fun. So, we're gonna show a little PowerPoint here that just has some of the pictures of the stuff that we did. I didn't know what was going on.
So, this is the students at Oak Hill. These are the school age students and they, they're out there reading when we get there and as soon as they all collect their books, they sit down in the shady spot and start reading their new books. They all keep logs, they're excited that we come. We read right up until the book's done.
This is our favorite stop. We actually love this house looking here. These kids are sitting outside waiting for us to come, finishing their books. You hear the yells, "The Bookmobile, the Bookmobile!" And they all just come out with their books and they're excited and they don't have, we don't have to do much here. They literally, as the sign says, hop right into the back of the truck and start digging through all of our things to find out what book that they want and it's just so, so awesome to see them so excited to pick out a book that they like and are interested in and to read.
There was one day we were delayed 20 minutes and they thought, I'm sure, we weren't coming. And when we pulled up in front of their house, they all came pouring out of the house and just, "We're so happy you're here." And Mom, you know, Mom said, "I reassured and you were coming," but they just, they didn't see you and they didn't believe it.
So, road work this summer.
That was treacherous. And we have parents who take books as well.
We got some adult books as well, so that if there are parents that are interested besides the kids, it's always good for the kids to see that their parents are reading as well. So, we do have that opportunity and available for them as well. So, we have some parents that regularly get out new books every week.
And there are older siblings, high school age students. So, we have pre-teen and young adult books, magazine subscriptions, cookbooks, health books. We've kind of covered every, every area we possibly could.
A little bit later, you'll see a slide, but we also have science books and experiment books and some of the kids were really into taking those out this year. So, you'll see some of the experiments that they did and the projects that they made out of the books that they took out from the Bookmobile.
She, this little girl's wearing her sunglasses. We also try to make sure that the incentives help them to continue to read in all areas. So, sunglasses, you can take your book outside on a sunny day and enjoy it. They get pencils to record in their, their reading logs. They get little totes to carry their books around with, bookmarks. The final, we did do paw printed bracelets, rubber bracelets that are representative of Powell School. And then the final incentive, we will present to them in front of the whole school and it's, Stewart's donates a free ice cream scoop to every child who takes part in the program. And that's, that's the end.
Oh, no, it's not. It just flipped off because they're still playing.
Oh.
I'm not sure what happened. There's still pictures.
Well, we do have a family who wanted to come and they weren't able to, but they did write a letter that they wanted us to share with the board. Dear members of Powell Elementary School Board, my family has truly appreciated the Bookmobile program over the past years. As a parent, I am always trying, sometimes unsuccessfully, to get my children to pick up and read books over the summer. The Powell Bookmobile has encouraged my children to read a book every week. They always have an interesting book for each one of my children coupled with a small reward for reading each week. My children always are reminding me that the Bookmobile is coming today. This program makes my summer easier and makes my children smarter, two things I love. Thank you for your support of the Bookmobile. Also, a big thank you to the two ladies that make the Bookmobile wonderful, Mrs. Cuccini and Mrs. Hunt.
Here's what my children think about Powell Bookmobile. Hi, my name is Eli. I'm a fourth grader. I like the Bookmobile because it has lots of books. I also like the Bookmobile because you can find books that you've never read but you like. There's prizes, but I like the books more. Hi, this is Maggie. I'm second grade. All the books are good and the people are super nice. Hi, I'm Ethan, a sixth grader. I like the sports books best. I like Jake Maddox. I would not have read these books if the Bookmobile did not come to our house. With sincere gratitude, the Labatt family. And they all signed the letter.
Clara, Charlie, Ethan, Eli, and Maggie. So, we just really wanted you to support us with this and we wanted you to see what it is that we're actually doing all summer long. It, like she said, it's six weeks, twice a week, and I, I feel like every year it's, the numbers are growing. And children run after us. We have, we had a little girl chase us down. We stopped at the house, there were no cars. Next thing we knew, we were driving around the corner and there she was. Kids will be riding their bikes, they'll throw their bikes down just to come to the Bookmobile. So, we're as exciting, if not more, than the ding dong car.
I was just gonna say that.
So, we, you know, thank you very much for your support.
I'd like to thank you as well, both of you. I mean, I know you're both dedicated to the program. The school board certainly supports this during our budget session every year, wanting to make sure that the Bookmobile continues. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, we do. On behalf of the board, we're doing a wonderful job.
Not a problem. I love doing it.
Great.
I'll get that back.
All right, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, if the board doesn't mind. Todd would like to move a, under principals' report next, after public comment.
So, I wanted to introduce some of the new staff and I know a few of them are NAMs here this evening as well, so, but invited them to come out this evening. First of all, Kevin Davis, our new maintenance manager. Ben Ferguson has already been hired by the board, our new art teacher. Jen Morgan was hired as our kindergarten para. We stole her from the special ed crew, but she's so excited to be part of the kindergarten classroom. We have Nancy Luke, who was a transfer from another school to the special ed department here at Powell's. And we have Caitlin Hunt, that will be a fourth grade teacher, NAM. So, wanted to introduce our new staff and thank you so much. I do have to say though, over my, how many years now I've been in education, when you call someone and you offer them a position, I have never had someone so excited as Ben Ferguson. In all my years, I mean, that was just one of the best phone calls that we had together and just wanna welcome all of you, but that was an exciting piece, just knowing that you were so excited to come here to Powell.
Of course, hometown, yeah.
Do you know what you're getting yourself into?
I do.
Okay, just wondering.
So, I didn't wanna put anybody on the spot, but if anyone wanted to say anything, you're sure welcome to do as well.
And welcome aboard.
I would share a few words, actually. I was just in the classroom shaping it up and I'm really excited because it, it's kind of, it's all coming to life now that I'm actually here and, and like moving things around. But I actually wanted to give a shout out to a former student who I just met today and his name is Jason Campbell. And I went down to Bennington rugs, I believe it was, carpets, and I told him that I'm a new time teacher and I wanted a carpet for the younger students to be able to come and sit on so we have more of an intimate conversation. And he was like, "Well, if it's Powell, you know, it's on me. Here you go. This is my, this is my way of giving back." And I was like, "Wow, well, I'm definitely gonna have to drop your name today." Yeah, that's, that one's for Mr. Campbell.
Yes, he's a good guy.
And I just wanted to say that I really look forward to the year and getting to know all the staff here. And I subbed here once this past year and it had such a nice feel, so I look forward to it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Welcome each and every one of you. I'm sure you're gonna be very happy here. You take someone like Debbie Brad, who's been here for a long, long time, she'll tell ya, she's still here, so something's gotta be going.
Yeah, I'm still here.
And while Kevin's still here, I do want to thank our custodial crew because our building looks wonderful. Summer projects are just about complete. Kevin is working a little bit still with Rich at times, maybe once a week, Rich touches base with Kevin and it's a good transition. A beautiful building. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And approaching the beginning, as you walked in, it was breathtaking. I mean, I just cannot say enough of how beautiful it is. It came out nice, as always. But you, you're being a new person, you're, you're doing an awesome job. Keep up the good work.
All right. And thank our custodial crew and Opam Cuccini helped out this summer. You know, spread the word to our other summer cleaners and I will as well that the building looks great. Thank you.
They've been very good and very helpful to me to transition.
Yeah, they're a good crew. They've, they've been doing it, probably the same few have been doing it for years. So, ten years?
Ten years.
Oh, wow. All right, I knew it was a long time. Well, you, you, you all have done a wonderful job. Okay. All right, we're going to switch now to personnel. This is amendment to the 2013-2016 ESP agreement and I'm gonna turn that over to Jim. Mr. Colkeen, wait a minute, I apologize. I think we need to introduce our superintendent, Mr. Jim Colkeen. I'm sorry, we just overlooked you. We shouldn't. Top, top notch person.
Not a problem.
So, welcome to the system.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. There was an issue on the paraeducators contract. There was a word that was in a proposed package by the board that was included in a final printing but had not been agreed to by both sides. So, it's gonna require, it was in Article 20 and revert, it referred to how many hours it was for overtime. So, it's gonna require a new, the page has been corrected here on page one. It is gonna require a new signature page, but, so I need signatures from all the board chairs.
Do you wanna speak to that, Jim?
Compared to me, we did, we discussed a little bit about the 30 hours versus a 40 hours for overtime. So, my first question is, what is the, what is the correction? That's not noted.
I believe it was 35 hours and it has been changed back to what it was before, back to the 30 hours.
Okay, so, I, I personally, I wasn't aware that was in the contract. I admit that. But at this point in time, I kind of, I do object to it, to paying, because these, these people work 1,100 hours a year and then to pay overtime after 30, I think is, is unnecessary. So, we're, we're discussing or thinking about how do we, this contract, is it still open then? Because if it's 35, you wanna go back to 30, that makes it even worse.
Yeah. I don't believe the contract is still open because we closed negotiations and we came to an agreement, but when the draft went out for signature, it hadn't gone back to, somehow, and I don't know, I wasn't part of that, but that word was, the, the time change was reflected. That was the proposal from the board and then it was never agreed upon in negotiations. So, the language would remain the way that it was, which was what you have in front of tonight.
So, how do we, from my perspective, fix that?
I'm sure it's gonna, if that was a board proposal this time, I'm sure it will remain on the table for the next round of negotiations.
2016, when the ESP contract opens up again, that'd be the time to address it.
And Cindy, do you recall how long this has been in there? You said it's quite a while?
It's been a long time, yes.
My understanding, it's been there.
A long time. But I do remember they tried to change it and nothing was, it didn't come to.
So... I do understand your objection, it is...
Well, the ESP contract, we all voted yes on, okay? And honestly, I didn't notice this then, and it came out by itself, but, you know, it's a big red flag. So, what if, what if we, what if this board or another board decided not to sign the amendment? What does that do?
I guess we're gonna have to consult with our legal counsel, but I'm saying if we don't have a valid current sign, signature page, then we could have an invalid contract. But we did come to a verbal agreement without that in there, so it could also be construed as bad faith bargaining too at that point because we did come to a verbal agreement that did not have that change.
But we had 35, which is better for the district. I'd be happy to leave it alone at 35.
That was a proposal, but it was never agreed upon by the other side. Somehow that proposed page is what I, my understanding is, got into the printing phase and it did not, it was not agreed to by both sides, so it's not valid.
Does anybody else disagree with that?
I told ya, I agree. That's not, about mistakes violation of federal law, right? It's after 40 and after eight.
Well, you, the law would be after 40 in a week, but you're, you're free to negotiate more generous arrangements, which is what you did somewhere in the past.
Or me, or somebody.
Yeah. To be honest with myself.
It's a big cause of me.
Right. There, that's what's in the contract currently. It was not, we did not nego, we were not successful in negotiating it out this time and so the current language remains.
I have a question for Rick. How often does this kick in? How much, how much does this normally impact us? How much overtime do we pay people at this level? How often?
Not significantly. I, I think that particularly most of the principals are aware of that restriction and we try to avoid it.
So, it might be a moot issue then?
Yep. A minor issue, not...
There's not big dollars involved, but...
But I think it, it's certainly noted that you want this back on the table for the next round of negotiations.
Okay, so, we need a motion to, let me sign the contract? No motion?
I'll move.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Cindy, can we do a motion to re-sign the, the revised contract or with change in the contract or...
Amendment.
It's an amendment, just sign the amendment.
Just sign the amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, we'll sign it. And in 2016, make a note, Doug, you can serve on that committee and you can voice your opinion of your spot.
Absolutely. She never asked, of course not. Who is paid for 30? No one's in half. You know, no one likes us on the issue. No one ever likes us on the issue.
No, but I think...
Okay.
This is the amended consent agenda also. There was one speculation.
Okay. Good. There you go. It's an amended consent agenda.
What's in, the amendment is in red.
Yes. All right, so, next is executive session for contracted services, teacher negotiated agreement, and off-contract employee compensation. Okay, do we want that one now or do we wanna move it?
Why don't we put that at the end?
That's what we usually do.
All right, let's move the executive session to the end. All right, action items. Treasurers' report for June and July is enclosed. Are there any discussions on that? No. Seeing none. All right, facilities, update on work completed and what is still to do.
Can you just take a motion to accept those treasurer's reports?
We never do, do we?
Should.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made a second. Any discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Yeah, we can start, but we never did.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, update on the work completed and what is still to do. Should we ask our new...
Sure, I can work on this with Kevin. As you all saw, the front entryway, the new entrance to Powell School has been almost completed. We do have events that need to be added. Kevin, you said earlier this...
We just talked to the gentleman saying they're supposed to move in the first of the week, the events. They had to wait till the door and the window was finished to get the exact measurement and I contacted him today and he said that they're ready and they should be in by the first of the week, the very first part of next week.
So, in my beginning of the year letter to the community, I did state that that area will now be a waiting area for parents when they pick up their students at the end of the day, so the front reception area is not so congested and it's a, less of a safety issue. The hot water heater for the kitchen has been installed. East walkway completed as far as yesterday?
Completed that yesterday.
Inside security camera has been installed as well.
That's all done, it's done last week.
Excellent.
And then the drainage area out here by the gym area has been completed as well.
Yep. That was completed the end of last week.
Very good. That was everything that was on the list.
Was that extra thing done, that extra cover put in?
Yeah, they asked.
Yes, yes, the drainage by the gym.
That was taken care of.
Yes. And the east walkway out here in the back was taken care of and the inside camera, the last camera for the inside.
Very good.
Thank you. That's good. All right. Yes.
Wasn't there, wasn't there something supposed to be done with the furnace, have it inspected again or something? Is anything done with that?
Not yet. There, we, there was talk of having someone come back to take a look at the heating system and we do need to do that.
Didn't we agree to hire, to look for a new person to, in Bennington County to handle it rather?
We did and in the transition of Rich and Kevin, we will take care of that this fall.
I think that was an active motion of the boards.
Okay.
I don't know.
You know, we talked about asking the principal to find somebody, because we're paying travel and overnight and stuff for somebody to come from rural and go look at the furnace.
Okay. All right. All right, consent agenda, need a motion to...
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion made a second. And this is included in the amended consent agenda that you have in front of you.
And the leave of absence is fine, correct?
Yes.
Is there, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay. Down to policies, 5156, student nutrition and wellness. This one is to adopt. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
I need discussion.
Yes, discussion?
I know, I know we're at the adoption stage, it's a good thing that Rick is here. There's an actual contract with the food service people, so item 3F, to district shall, that's mandatory, ensure that food service, oh wait, that was it. Got it? I wanted to comment on...
You have to highlight it so when you get to the meeting, you'll use it.
Yeah. There's something in here that we have to pay for training and, where? Oh, I missed it by one. District shall provide training opportunities as appropriate for food, service, and other staff members in areas of nutrition and wellness. So, this is the policy, but we have an actual contract with...
It's part of their contract to provide that training.
Okay, so, should we ask, can we go back to policy and take this out? Because we don't want a future contractor coming back to our policy and saying it's our policy to pay for. It's, it's something that, that might confuse the contract. The contract is the contract, we shouldn't have this.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I think the difficulty is if, for some reason in the near future, hopefully after I'm gone, that we decide to do our own in-house food service and, you know...
You're gonna want the policy?
We have to do it. I mean, it's, it's part of the contract that we enter into. We have to make sure that the staff is trained and that's part of the RFP and the contract that goes out to fulfill that requirement. So, I think we're okay.
Is there a sharp lawyer or something could double dip on this?
We have a lawyer.
There's a lot of sharp lawyers that can do a lot of things, you know, but I think we're fine. We haven't had a problem to pass, but...
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on 5156? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. We have adopted it. The next one is to warn, 4020, appointments of administrators other than the superintendent. This is strictly to warn. Need a motion? Okay, second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor of a warning, 4020, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. And the next one is 7300, public participation at board meetings, and this is to warn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, this is the pen to sign on it. It's, Rick's passed it down. All right, going down to the principals' report. We've already introduced this new staff. Beginning of the year information.
Yeah. So, part of our beginning of the year professional development piece that we'll have here at Powell will be a piece of technology with SMARTboard training for our teachers as well as Google Docs training as well. Teachers will have time to work on their, you'll hear the, the term or the acronym MTSS, multi-tiered system of support, in which we collaborate and work together to place students in groupings for reading and math. So, they'll have time to work in collaboration to work on those student tiered group as well. And that will be on Monday, the 25th. On the 26th, we begin the day at the high school with the superintendent introduction and welcome, and then we have a guest speaker as well. And in the afternoon, some mandatory online trainings of child abuse reporting, bullying, confidentiality, and, I'm missing one, FERPA. And the following day, on the 27th, will be at Monument School. Our staff along with Monument will be, the focus is Collins writing training, so it's a writing program for our teachers and it's, that'll be consistent throughout the building with Monument School as well and that'll be on the 27th. And then, of course, our first day is August, the 28th. And as tradition holds, we'll have the first day performance at 9:30, so parents are invited as well and that was in my welcome letter to the community. When you bring your child or your child is brought to school, you're sure welcome to come along and stay for that first day performance at 9:30. And then the transition out of the building, so our teachers get to have the rest of the first day with the kids. And that'll be on the 28th. Looking further down the calendar, want to invite everyone to our open house on September the 9th and that'll begin at 5:30 with classroom visitations. And then after that, we'll have our traditional cookout at 6 o'clock to 7:00. That's September the 9th. And I think that's all with beginning of the... And I think that's all with, uh, beginning of the year activities.
Okay, very good.
Uh, see, I did have a request, um, just like last year, the beginning of the year with our, um, bus paras and getting our, um, system down with the new children, I just wanted to bring this to the board and see if we could, um, possibly do, um, the morning para for the first two weeks of school, just to make sure that our bus runs and the bus, uh, drivers have someone additional on the bus for the first couple of weeks of school.
Okay, that's the board.
Are these existing employees, or?
They are, yeah, yeah.
Yes, strictly.
They do our afternoon runs that, um, we just feel like the first two weeks of school to have that, uh, system down, would- we would appreciate the support of the board for two weeks for morning pairs on the buses.
Whatever you say. I know who you're with.
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, sure. Strictly paras, so.
Right.
Take a motion to that effect for me, please?
Sure.
I'll make a motion, we have morning paras for the first two weeks of school.
Okay, second?
Can we make that ten days, because it's broken up with a holiday?
Alright, ten days.
For ten school days.
It is broken up, you are right, um-
Because it's two days, four days, five, so ten school days. Who made the motion?
I did. That's fine.
Motion remained seconded. All those in favor?
It's actually eleven days.
Make it- make it eleven days.
It is eleven, if we do, if we do the two, four, and five.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get our math now.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
It's unanimous, okay, and this is strictly paras?
It is.
Yes, we- we don't need any parents. Okay, um, you have the kneecap report, too?
Yes, um, I'm just going to read off of the report because it's not for public reporting, but, um, we did not make AYP. We are title, uh, title one, year three corrective action, and that letter was sent out and it's posted on our website as well. And actually, and Jim may want to confirm this with me, even if one student was not proficient in this testing year, your school, um-
That's correct.
Did not make AYP.
That is a reality of that test, so one student in any category doesn't make AYP, then the school does not make AYP.
Are you able to publish the number? I know that, everybody knows about the one, one student, that's a big bad thing in law. Are you able to publish how many students didn't make it, though? Obviously, it's one, but can you give us the real number, the actual number?
I don't have that with me, but I know there's a website, I could send that out to the board to, um, actually go to the Agency of Education, and you click on Pennell School and reports there.
So the number is known?
Yes.
I have that full report from the state, so we're just processing that now to-
I think everybody would be interested in that, because they're making a lot of noise about the wooden- wooden student.
Yeah, I'll have to clarify whether I can actually release that, or is there any privacy issue? I mean, obviously not names, but we have- I have the full report for each student, each category, and I'll be meeting with the principals to review that with them and then release it through them.
No one in the SVSU qualified, correct?
Correct.
No one was first time, unusual.
Unless you didn't take the test, unless you didn't have enough students.
But even the Vermont Commission of Education has taken issue with that, and- and now we're gonna shift what that test is that we take, so it's, you know, we're-
We're into common court, are we not?
We're not gonna be able to compare anything to this.
So this is kind of old, old stuff.
Right, this is the last time you will have these test results from this test.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, but we're gonna take the common court, because we're not gonna start scoring it for a while, while you understand it. Am I correct on that, or am I mistaken on that? Supposed to be a grace period.
The state hasn't released all the guidelines yet for the-
Okay, you don't know, fair enough.
Right, and the, uh, the test is slated for this spring, but, you know, test dates have been set yet and are all- are all the, um, parameters of how that is, so. We're- we're in a quick learning curve on that, and I'm- I'm not convinced the state is ready yet for that, but, um-
They're ready for anything?
They're- they- they said it's coming, so that we need to be ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes my report, and just really looking forward to another school year, another wonderful school year.
That's right, it's gonna be a great one too, I can tell.
Thank you.
Any board member have anything to add?
Has the playground been, uh, corrected for the safety- safety issues? I think it's important that we say that all out there.
Yes.
Last meeting, you brought to our attention that there were some safety issues.
Correct.
And maybe fix it. Thank you.
Did we get the playground grant, just let me?
Um, the- the paperwork for the grant is not due, Bill. Um, if we go in that direction until, um, October?
The, uh, yes, I think it's the end of September, actually, is the deadline for the, is the playground grant?
Correct.
Yes, I- I do know that you put out for available dates, and I'm glad you brought it up. I don't know if we have a meeting yet.
Hasn't been scheduled, trying to coordinate everybody's schedule, but I do think when school begins, we'll be able to move on.
Yeah, I'm happy to be a resource guide, participate in ways that are appropriate.
Thank you.
Good, we appreciate it.
Personally, we have a great, I mean, it's a great playground, and I feel like we have sufficient equipment out there for our students. But, you know, as- as we look into, um, the future and wanting to, um, possibly look into more equipment or equipment for all age levels, we're, uh, we'll have that open at our committee meetings.
Let me know too. Okay, my question too, we discussed, I think it was with Frank Burns, was going to order computers?
He did, he did.
Yes. Yes, they just came in like a couple days ago.
They're gonna say they're here, I think, already. He has one for you.
They're- they're at the, uh, central office being processed through the tech staff now.
Okay, good, answered my question.
We're on that subject. I talked to Frank, and if anybody's interested in seeing what they are and using them, he's willing to arrange, like, time for us to go up to Junior High and try them.
Okay.
So for interest, we need to let- let him know by the next tech meeting. I have the date on night, so I don't remember, it's in September sometime.
Okay, can you email it to us?
Yeah.
Okay, great, yeah, yeah, I'd like to attend that. Okay, our next, um, Pennell Board meeting?
I'll attend that meeting, and he will set it up from there.
Okay, just let me know.
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Okay. The next, uh, Pennell Board meeting will be September seventeenth at five-thirty. That's all I have. Bill, I want to thank you for coming, and we will keep you posted when we do our meeting for the playground. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, mate. Um, I don't have a lot to share with you, but, uh, I will tell you a little what I've been doing in my first, uh, month on the job, and, uh, many of you know what that is. I- I did write an entry plan for how I was gonna begin my job in my first hundred days here, and that included doing one-on-one meetings with all board members and administrators. I met with central office personnel, and each group that I met, we had a different series of questions that, uh, that I asked them, so we kept on that. Central office, I met with them and, uh, went through questions with them. I sent a different series of questions to the principals, and then I think I have met with twenty-one board members to date, and we're in about an hour with each interview, and we go over nine questions. I think it's been, uh, a really good experience for me. It jumpstarts the relationship between the superintendent and the school board, that months of meetings, we would not have that kind of communication. I've enjoyed those meetings and what I've learned about, uh, the board members that I'll be working with. And the principals, um, I haven't made it to Pennell yet, I think, uh, the, um, what I do there is it's a building tour, and they- they got their questions emailed to them in advance, and then I meet with them in their building, tour their building, and go over the questions, uh, with the principals, and I'm not sure where, if you're scheduled yet. I know I'm in Shaftesbury tomorrow.
First week of September.
First week of September, you know, we're gonna stay out of next week with the principals. I think they're all gonna have their hands full. And then we'll go on to community members and staff members and continue, uh, uh, building, um, a repository of, uh, information for me that I think will help me do my job. I also, uh, have made it, uh, really my policy that if I'm going to sign a, uh, a nomination sheet that goes before a board mem- of the board, I want to do the final interview with who that person is that I've signed. Some of the people, congratulations, by the way, some of the people here tonight were a little before me, so might have slipped, uh, through that, but I, um, I am on, uh, there's a lot of, uh, staff changes throughout the supervisory union this summer, uh, well over sixty, and I think personally I have, um, in the low forties as far as my forty-one or forty-two interviews. They don't last long, they're ten, fifteen minutes, and then I take them to HR to begin processing the paperwork, and it's the, I want to be able to tell you that I've met these people and that I approve of it. So, that's been, um, focus of, uh, of my time to date, and, uh, hope to continue doing that. And then I will report back in future superintendent reports to sum up my findings and share, uh, some of the concerns that I'm hearing from other board members, so. Other than that, glad to be here, and, uh, I'll see you at future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Now, I for one met with you and I thought that that time was- was not wasted, it was- it was, um, very helpful.
I'll say the same thing.
Yeah.
I love feeling very good about it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, um, I'm not kidding when I said enjoyed talking to all of you and learning and, uh, who you, a little bit, who you are and, and, um, you know, it's, to share with other people what the, some of the questions are asked to the board member, right? At the first, which I- I think, you know, kind of sets the tone, and it might have surprised you, is I make you give a biographical sketch of yourself to me. So it'd be, I shifted to you, and- and I found that very helpful to know a little insight behind you, and then, uh, you know, why you ran for the board, what you- what you think you've accomplished, what you hope to accomplish, how long you've been on the board, and what your expectations are of me as superintendent, and if there's anybody here I haven't gotten to yet, Mary Lee will be hunting you down to- to get a meeting.
Alright, thank you very much, and welcome aboard. Okay, uh, now, do we have anything other? Come before the board. FYI, the budget status report is enclosed?
Actually, it wasn't. We- we've been buried with stat reports, so we didn't get it out, but-
So I didn't say, oh, okay.
We'll get it out, yeah.
Alright.
The intent was to, but there's a large DOE, as, uh, stat report, as Rick mentioned, that has swamped people, so.
Alright, and the VSB- V- VBA motor vehicle idling policy guidance for twenty-fourteen was enclosed.
Yeah, I just put that in there as FYI, just so you can see what's coming down the road.
Right.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to deal with that mess at some point.
Absolutely. Alright, so, we'll need to move into executive session at this point. There's no- no other business to come before the board?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, move into, and I don't believe, I don't think we'll be coming out, making any, you know, this is more or less just information, I believe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, move this here.